City Commission meeting. There's the microphones. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. I believe it is Commissioner Euler's turn to do Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we pray for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Garden City. Be with our first responders to keep them safe and continue to remind us that all we do here today and all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Okay. First thing up is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see any changes?
No, they look fine.
All right. They will stand approved then. Next, we have public comment. This is a time for anybody to come and discuss anything that they'd like to. It's limited to things that aren't on the agenda already. We have 30 minutes set aside and five minutes per spokesperson, please. And I believe C. Lynn, wherever she is, has the first thing to say.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to ask that anyone that does step up to the podium today, that you do speak directly into the microphone. We've had issues with citizens not being able to hear through our social media outlets, so if you speak directly into the microphone, that should solve that problem.
So if you hear yourself, that means it's probably getting picked up?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's a big intro, so I hope we have people that kind of pick them in time.
No pressure on this one. So my name is Beth Koksel. I'm the Director of Community Health at Livelife in E. County. So I'm here today to invite everyone to our annual meeting, which will be held on September 27th at noon and will be in the endowment room of the Beth Tedrow Center at Garden City Community College. You guys should have received an email from us yesterday with a link to register, so we will be serving lunch that day, so we're trying to get an accurate head count for that meeting. But we hope you all have the chance to join us because it will be a good opportunity to look back at what we've accomplished over the last year and then work on setting some new goals for some future years, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. And thank you for speaking into the microphone. Facebook will let us know if we did it right. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Becca Byrne-Finn, Social Studies teacher at Garden City High School. Today, in your presence, I just wanted you to know you have 13 students that are taking government at night school, so this is after-school hours, and they've just started learning about local, state, and federal government. So their goal today is just to watch the proceedings and get some common language and so that they're aware of kind of what our city council does and how that impacts the government. These are all sophomores and juniors, so they're taking it in order to graduate early. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment? All right, we can move on. And I believe we have item six.
Six A. The governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Marion Nolan, National Society's government. See if that makes sense to you.
No, you gotta push them.
She will.
I can feel the Facebook fives right now.
I have that down pat. Anyway, item number six A is the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Marion Nolan, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, to allow the marriage proclaimed the week of September 17th through the 13th, 2022, as Constitution Week in Garden City, Kansas.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion?
Seventeenth through the 23rd, just to clarify.
Yes.
September 17th through the 23rd.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes?
They have some representatives.
They have some representatives. What we'll do is, I'll read the proclamation, then if you want to come up and say anything, and then we'll take a picture if you want to take a picture. All right. Okay, so the proclamation is, "Whereas it is a privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Shannon L. Dick, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in the City of Garden City, Kansas, and encourage our citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibility that that privilege involves. Signed and sealed this 20th day of September, 2022." Come on up, and if you have anything to say, then we'll do a little photo shoot.
Mayor Dick and the city council members. I'm Marion Nolan, and I am the Regent for William Wilson Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. And we have representatives with us. Would you stand? We would like to have a photo for our records. I'd like to introduce Kay Hoskinson, our Recording Secretary, Dixie Drake, who's now the State Chairman of National Defense, a new member, Kristi Meyer, and our Registrar, Carly Hazel.
All right. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Take a picture.
We're just gonna witness, like, or are we gonna try to look as in...
I see the line being written.
There you go. So be able to tell us how everybody...
Can we center the mayor? Do that way?
Somebody hold this good.
Now I can't see. Okay, now I'm very good right now. One, two, three. Split.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Bill? Okay.
from city staff, one on the regional airport, the zoo, and for some finance. If there's any questions, staff here could answer those. Tim?
I just have...
Go ahead.
I just have a few comments that were given to me that I could pass on to the Lee Richardson Zoo folk that every morning, they're so inviting the staff out there and very informative for those who have been walking every morning. They've been, I've just, I've been told that they've been very just informational about every question that they have, are able to answer all of their questions, and it's just a really nice place to go out and have a morning walk, so they'd like to extend that appreciation on to the zoo staff out there.
Just looking at the monthly report for the airport, I think definitely on track for record enplanements and, and so, you know, just showing that we are becoming a truly regional airport in western Kansas.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, next item is the item eight, Meetings of Note. There are several items there listed, and if there's anything that requires an RSVP, please just contact C. Lynn.
Okay. Then I'd like to add that Governor Kelly will be in town here. She's doing, visiting some of her housing developments. She'll be here about 3:15, and she'll be 2108 Attawild in Chapel Heights. So if we get out of this meeting in time, we might build a skedaddle on over there.
Great, thank you. If you're ready, Mayor and Commissioners, number nine A is the appropriation ordinance, and if approved, it would be ordinance number 2563-2022A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2563-2022A.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Okay. The next item, 10, is a consideration of ordinances and resolutions. The first item is consider of an RFB, Revenue Bonds Resolution. However, if it's, if you so wish, it would make sense to move number 12A, because the MOU that pertains needs to be actually be approved or considered before the resolution.
Right.
So if that's okay with you.
So we'll move 12A, we'll do 12A under new business now.
And if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, I'll just do that one from right here.
Okay.
Okay, the, it's the governing body is asked to consider and approve a memorandum of understanding between Garden City Plaza LLC and the City of Garden City. The Woodward Company is doing business as Garden City Plaza LLC, reached out to the City of Garden City and was interested in redeveloping the old Sears building located at 2310 East Kansas Avenue. The project will include commercial redevelopment of an existing building that will accommodate at least two national chain tenants, up to three smaller-scale retail stores, and freestanding restaurants, and other complementary uses. This MOU, if approved, outlines the anticipated project costs along with the anticipated public contributions, including but not limited to tax increment financing, community improvement district, retailer sales tax exemption, this will be through the industrial revenue bonds, and other city incentives and special obligation bonds. There will be several future city commission actions required related to the project, but this action initiates the process to begin the redevelopment of the site. City Bond Council Mary House, Mary Carson, has assisted in the preparation of the attached memorandum and understand that it's been reviewed and approved by the developer. The city commission is asked to consider this MOU before taking actions on the industrial revenue bond resolution of intent. By the nature of this, this is why we moved this one in front of the other, so your alternatives would be to approve this MOU with Garden City Plaza LLC, do not approve the MOU with Garden City Plaza LLC. Staff recommends alternative one, approve the MOU with Garden City LLC, Garden City Plaza LLC, and the financial impact is that the financial impact would be up to $200,000 would be paid from the general fund, and that would occur in $100,000 increments at the time a certificate of occupancy is issued for the two national chain retail stores. The payment may also be used to offset city charges. So that's the MOU, and if it's okay, I'd like to go ahead and get Mary Carson and two others, the developers, on the phone. Then if there's questions about the MOU or the next item, they would be ready to...
Okay.
Get on the phone. So if you'll just bear with me here for a few minutes while I see if I make this work.
Would it be helpful to have, bring up the proposed site plan, so we know what buildings we're talking about? I don't know who has control of, is it Mike?
That would work.
Sorry.
Trying to just get you to do as many things as possible at once.
Hello, Mary?
Hi, Mary, this is Mike Muirhead with the City of Garden City.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine. Hey, you're on speakerphone, I'm gonna put you on hold while I get the other two parties on the line. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, please hold. Hi, Stephen, this is Mike Muirhead with the City of Garden City.
Oh, Mike, how are you?
I'm fine, Stephen. Hey, you're on speakerphone, I'm gonna put you on hold just for a second while we get Scott on the phone with Mary.
I'm gonna put you on hold and get someone else on the phone.
Okay, that's fine.
We're sorry, your call cannot be completed at this time.
Hi, Scott, this is Mike Muirhead with the City of Garden City. Mary, are you there?
Yeah, this is Stephen Osland and Grant Gary on the phone with us.
Okay, and Mary, you're on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You guys were in a live city commission meeting, and I just read the MOU, so they have a full understanding of that there.
I will. They're prepared to take action here in a second. So I'm getting the microphone open by the phone. Hear you.
Mary, would you like to just say something so we can make sure this is working?
Yeah, sure. Good afternoon to everybody.
Good afternoon.
Okay, I think we're ready, so I'll turn this over back to the mayor and commission and see if they're ready to take action on the MOU that I just read.
Okay, do we first want to have, maybe have Lonnie come up and discuss a little bit about what this project is and kind of set us straight on...
Yes.
Since that building, the plans are up to...
Yeah, Lonnie Devall, Finney County Economic Development. This is, as you, as you all very well aware, we have been sitting with an empty, very large, empty big box in the Garden City Plaza area. Just to be clear, there are two separate owners of this area. That's, most people are surprised to hear that. But the building we're talking about now is owned by Garden City Plaza LLC, which is a part of the Woodmont Development Group. They're a new developer to the area. We were able to work with our retail recruiter to get them interested in coming up. They came and visited the community and got pretty excited about this property right off the bat. So this is different ownership than the side that faces, to the target side, if you will. That ownership is, has been in place for a very long time, but they are, they are separate entities that own these. So this memorandum that you're considering today is about the redevelopment only of the Sears, the former Sears location. Any other questions?
I just, well, now that you mentioned it, on, it's too separate because it, I thought before, it was like three or four years ago, we did a CID. I noticed in our memo, and for, like redevelopment of the parking lot and that, is, they're not, that's not this group, it's the other group.
That is correct.
Or, okay.
It's a great question, Commissioner. When you look at the, the site plan you have pulled up, the dark part of the parking lot, which is the, the more recently resurfaced, that is ownership with this Sears building that's under discussion today. The remainder of that parking lot is, again, the other side's ownership. So the community improvement district that you put in place three or four years ago, COVID, we don't remember, right? That CID is in place specifically for facade renovations, air conditioning, HVAC-type repairs, and parking lot repairs. We have been working with the owners of that building to get that work underway, but certainly the pandemic didn't help us, and then they lost, of course, JCPenney, which was one of their larger sales generators. So we are working with them to get that done, but this is a completely separate group, and their improvements really have nothing to do with the other side.
Okay.
And I do want to mention, I appreciate that, using that national recruiter that we, that we had approved those, those dollars for, and so having them, and I know they've done a lot more, but just really paying attention, this is part of those dollars we spent that actually are not only generating some really unique opportunities for us, but I just appreciate you guys working with them.
Well, and we're, we're just really fortunate because you do have a team at Economic Development that we can tell our story.
Right.
You know, that's the real challenge we have, and, you know, Ricky, who represents us through the retail recruitment, is, he's always in a better position to market us simply because we can tell our story and show the economics. So it makes a huge difference, but people are going to be really pleased with the redevelopment of this, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
All right. I'll make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding as presented. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And now we need to hop back over to...
Yep, just, Mayor, go back to the, the actual intent of the resolution. And that would be resolution number...
Twenty-nine thirty.
Twenty-nine thirty.
Twenty-nine thirty?
Two-nine-three-nine.
Two-nine-three-nine.
Three-nine.
Thirty-nine. So the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution of intent to issue taxable industrial bonds, IRB, to the Woodmore Company for the redevelopment of existing retail building, developing an outlot and related improvements. The background on this is the Woodmont Company, doing business as Garden City Plaza LLC, reached out to the city, Garden City, interested in redeveloping the old Sears building located at 2310 East Kansas Avenue. The project will include commercial redevelopment of the existing building, and will include these two national chain tenants, and up to three smaller-scale retail stores, a freestanding restaurant, and other complementary issues. You just approved the MOU, which is a retailer's sales tax exemption. This allows a developer to receive exemption from sales tax on eligible costs related to construction materials, equipment, services, and furnishings of the property, of the project. And as I stated earlier, the city bond council, Mary Carson, has assisted in the preparation of the attachment of this, and has been approved by her and the developer, as well as reviewed by city council. The city commission is asked, you approve the MOU before taking action on this one, so now by nature, this is the next one that's coming up, sorry about that. So alternatives are to approve the resolution of intent and provide a retailer's sales tax exemption to the Woodmont Company, or do not approve the resolution of intent to provide a retailer's sales tax exemption to the Woodmont Company. And staff recommends alternative number one, there is no financial impact to the city by approving this resolution. And as you know, we have Mary Carson and others on the phone. Should there be any questions of the commission?
Right. Any discussion, questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve the resolution number twenty-nine thirty-nine dash twenty-two.
I'll second.
Right, there's a motion.
Second. I think I'm...
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody on the phone. Sorry to get...
Thank you, everybody.
Not let you talk, but everything passed, so you're in good, you're in good shape.
The Woodmont Company thanks everybody and thanks you for the consideration, and we look forward to being a great, great contributor to the community.
We're excited.
Yeah, very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Mike, do you want me to stay on for the next item on the geo-bonds?
Yep.
Yes, please, Mary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And when you talk, Mike, could you talk into the, the mic, Mike?
Ready?
Yeah. And then note that Commissioner Ortiz stepped down for this item. Okay.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution regarding the 2022 general obligation bond sale. If approved, this would be resolution number twenty-nine forty dash twenty-two. A resolution of the City of Garden City, Kansas, authorizing the public sale of the city's general obligation bonds, Series A, 2022, in the estimated principal amount of $16,645,000, setting forth the details of a public sale and authorizing notice thereof. I believe Jared is going to talk to this.
No, Mike's just happy to hand this off. Good afternoon. At our last meeting, the governing body authorized proceeding with the 2022 general obligation bond issuance by approving ordinance number twenty-nine thirty-three dash twenty-two for the improvements of the third fire station. The next step in the process is consideration and approval of this resolution authorizing the bond sale at 10:00 AM on November 1st, 2022. Third fire station improvements are authorized under the Public Building Act, and Mary Carson and City Bond Council helped prepare this resolution. This is on the same day that a commission meeting falls on, so we will open those bonds and we'll present them at the commission meeting on that day for, for approval. The alternatives today are to adopt a resolution as presented or to defer action to a later date, and staff recommends alternative one. As a fiscal note, the debt payments for the third fire station improvements are budgeted for and will be paid from the sales tax project fund, which is Fund 045, over 10 years, beginning in 2023. And Mary is still on the phone, so any questions, I'd be happy to answer, or Mary would be able to.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty-nine forty dash twenty-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Jared.
Yep. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good afternoon.
You, too, thanks.
Next time we call you, we'll let you talk a lot.
Let's wait a second for Commissioner Ortiz to get back from the time-delay room.
Okay, the next item, Mayor and Commissioners, would be 10D, if we change the numbering on that. The governing body is asked to consider and approve lease purchase financing for seven police department vehicles. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty-nine forty-one dash twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the City of Garden City to enter into a municipal lease purchase agreement for police department vehicles with Clayton Holdings LLC. Jared?
So the police department has ordered seven 2022 police department vehicles. There are five Explorer SUV interceptors and two 2022 Honda Pilot SUVs that were approved in the 2022 budget. Total amount for all the vehicles, $269,335. All of these vehicles were approved at prior meetings, bid out, it's been quite the process in getting them. I'll note that the Honda Pilots were on a previous meeting just recently. The, the item for you today is for the financing of these vehicles, and so we received quotes from three different providers. Clayton Holdings offered a quote at 3.87% for all seven vehicles, and then we had a quote from Ford Motor Credit just for the five Ford Explorer SUV interceptors at 7.54%. And the Honda financing for the two Honda Pilots was 5.9%. So alternatives today are to approve the lease purchase financing with Clayton Holdings and approve the resolution to sign the, the lease agreements. Option two would be to approve the lease purchase financing with Ford Motor Credit and American Honda Finance, and three would be to pay from the cash balance and amend the 2022 budget. Staff recommends the lease purchase financing option with Clayton Holdings LLC, approval of the resolution, and approval for the mayor to sign the lease agreement, lease purchase documents. As a fiscal note, these lease purchase payments are adequately funded in the police department budget through their new equipment vehicle line in 2022, and then in '23 and '24 as well.
Yeah, I move that we approve the lease purchase findings with Clayton Holdings LLC and approve resolution number twenty-nine forty-one dash twenty-two, and approve the mayor to sign the lease purchase documents.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Thank you, Jared.
The next item, Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance regulating the provision of water service by the City of Garden City, Kansas, within and without the corporate limits of the same, amending code sections 90-112 and 90-117, repealing existing code sections 90-112, 90-117, and 90-118, and 42-125, all of the code of ordinances of the City of Garden City, Kansas. Fred's going to cover this one, I believe.
Okay. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The existing city code sections 90-112, 90-117, 90-118, and 42-125 are found to have conflicting statements regarding... regarding water service lines. This included the definition of water service lines, water taps, water tap fees, and the demarcation of city responsibility. The city has worked with city attorney's office in clarifying the language, and the areas on the attached draft ordinance that is highlighted in red demonstrates language removed, the areas highlighted in green is the new proposed language of the ordinance. Alternatives for the governing body to approve amending code sections ninety dash one-twelve, ninety dash one-seventeen, and repealing code sections ninety dash one-eighteen and forty-two dash one-twenty-five. Second alternative is do not approve amending code sections ninety dash one-twelve and ninety dash one-seventeen, and repealing code sections ninety dash one-eighteen and forty-two dash one-twenty-five. Staff recommends alternative number one, there is no financial impact to the city in amending the code sections.
So this really just gives a better definition? I was reading through it, it just kind of cleans up and better defines the services provided? I mean, really?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate section ninety dash one-seventeen really defining who the meters be paid by, and I think that, from red that you deleted and really spelled it out, I think it makes a lot of sense so that people understand that this is their responsibility, so.
Any other discussion? Do we have an ordinance number on this? Twenty-nine thirty-five?
Twenty-nine thirty. I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number twenty-nine thirty-five dash twenty-two-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. I put that all together, and then Fred had to cover.
Oh, there you go.
Actually, Jimmy and the city attorney worked through that with us quite a bit, cleaning that language up.
You're going to have Fred read the whole red, this is in red.
No, thank you. The next item, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty-nine thirty-five dash twenty-two-two, which is a resolution authorizing the removal of nuisance conditions from property listed below in the city pursuant to section thirty-eight dash one-thirty-nine of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Garden City, Kansas, which is located at 1001 Gillespie Place. It's an environmental, the yard, tires, wood, and construction debris there. Alicia is going to talk about that.
Welcome for a while.
Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body of the city of Garden City has declared it unlawful for any person to maintain nuisance conditions on private property within the city of Garden City. It has been determined that the residence located at 1001 Gillespie Place has environmental nuisance conditions on the property and is in violation of the city's environmental code. There are tires, wood, and construction debris throughout the property. Staff has visited the property on many occasions and spoken to the property owner, and was given a, was given two extensions of two weeks to abate the nuisance since on the property. There was no progress made regarding the environmental nuisance. The property owner has been notified by two letters sent on May 31st, 2022, and June 28th, 2022, according to section thirty-eight dash one-thirty-seven of the Environmental Code of Ordinances, and have neither abated the nuisance conditions nor requested a hearing before the governing body. The attached resolution will allow staff to mitigate the environmental nuisance on this property. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one to approve the attached resolution.
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty-nine forty-two dash twenty-two-two.
I'll second.
Just to be clear, that resolution is twenty-nine forty-two? Okay. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
The next item, mayor and commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve another environmental nuisance resolution, there's several following this. This one is number twenty-nine forty-three. It's a resolution authorizing the exact same thing in section code thirty-eight one-thirty-nine, and I'll turn that over to Alicia.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is for thirteen oh six St. John Street for Branches. As he mentioned before, this is an environmental nuisance. They, we visited the site and sent out letters on June 24th and July 8th, according to section thirty-eight dash one-thirty-seven of the Environmental Code of Ordinances, and the property owner has neither abated the nuisance or requested a hearing before the governing body. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the attached resolution, or two, the governing body may not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one.
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty-nine forty-three dash twenty-two-two.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
The next environmental nuisance resolution would be resolution number twenty-nine forty-five dash twenty-two-two, if approved. This also is in violation of city section code thirty-eight dash one-thirty-nine, and the issue is located at nine oh one North Taylor Avenue.
It'd be twenty-nine forty-four.
Sorry.
Okay.
Correct.
You're just keeping us on our toes today.
That's right.
Make sure we can count.
I believed you skipped on purpose.
Forty-four.
This would be for fifteen oh two A Street to remove a deep freezer tub, microwave, tires with rims, branches dresser, and loose trash. Again, there were two letters sent out, the property owner has not abated nor requested a hearing. Your alternatives are to approve the attached resolution, or to not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-nine forty-four dash twenty-two-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you, the next resolution would be resolution number twenty-nine forty-five, and it's the same resolution in violation of the Code of Ordinances thirty-eight dash one-thirty-nine. This is located at nine oh one North Taylor Avenue, Box Springs.
For nine oh one North Taylor, again, for Box Springs, there were two letters sent out. The property owner has neither abated the issue or requested a public hearing. Your alternatives are is to approve the attached resolution, or to not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one.
I move that we approve resolution number twenty-nine forty-five dash twenty-two-two.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Okay, the next item, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it'd be resolution number twenty-nine forty-six dash twenty-two-two. This also is in violation of city code section thirty-eight one-thirty-nine of the city code of ordinances, and the location is at three fourteen North Thirteenth Street. Couch and some tires, car, et cetera, is there.
Mayor and Commissioners, again, another environmental nuisance. The property owner has neither abated or requested a public hearing. You may approve the attached resolution or not approve the attached resolution.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-nine forty-six dash twenty-two-two.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
The next item, commissioners, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. This would be resolution number twenty-nine forty-seven dash twenty-two-two, if approved. It's a resolution authorizing the removal of motor vehicle nuisance from certain properties in the city of Garden City, Kansas, pursuant to section code thirty-eight sixty-three of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Garden City, and it is a three oh three North Second Street, a white four-door vehicle.
Mayor and Commissioners, three oh three North Second Street, removal of a white four-door vehicle, this is one inoperable vehicle on the property. The owner was sent out letters, and has neither abated or requested a public hearing. You may, one, approve the attached resolution, or two, not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number twenty-nine forty-seven dash twenty-two-two.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Commissioners, the next item is also a motor vehicle nuisance resolution, and if approved, that would be twenty-nine, it'd be resolution number twenty-nine forty-eight dash twenty-two-two. They're again in violation of city code section thirty-eight dash sixty-three, located at a one Jenny Avenue, a gray Chevy four-door and a blue truck.
Mayor and Commissioners, eight oh one Jenny Avenue for a gray Chevy four-door and a blue truck. A letter was sent out, and they have neither abated or requested a public hearing. You may approve the attached resolution or not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number twenty-nine forty-eight dash twenty-two-two.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
This would be the last motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it'd be resolution number twenty-nine forty-nine dash twenty-two-two. Same thing, in violation of city code section thirty-eight sixty-three, the city of Garden City, located at one twelve West Olive Street. It's a blue SUV.
Mayor and Commissioners, again, a motor vehicle nuisance at one twelve West Olive. They have neither abated or removed the vehicle. Your alternatives are to approve the attached resolution or to not approve the attached resolution. Staff would recommend alternative one.
I just had a quick question on this one, because it's behind a fence, backed in, how do, was it just reported to us that it's not operable, or, I mean, how do we know? It's more, it's more protected than the other, I mean, I understand where, on the others, you see the tag, it's not licensed, I mean, you understand the tag's not registered properly, it's out of compliance, that type of thing. This one, I kind of looked at that a little closer, it's behind a fence, it's backed in to a, I'm just asking, just for clarification.
Yeah, so typically, when we get, we get a complaint about it, our code enforcement officer will go out there and visit the site multiple times before we actually do send a letter, and she sent the letter twice and tried to contact them multiple times, so as staff, we consider it inoperable because it has not moved for more than a month, and so we will work with the police department to get the vehicle moved.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number twenty-nine forty-nine dash twenty-two-two.
Second.
Just motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. There is no old business to come before the commission, so number twelve, a new business. We already completed item A, that was the MOU with the Garden City Plaza LLC, so the next item would be twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the Hawkeye Edition, amending Exhibit E eligible costs.
Welcome back.
Mayor and Commissioners, the governing body is asked to review and consider a First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Hawkeye Development Rural Housing Incentive District. The developer, Hawkeye Development LLC, has requested to amend the approved eligible costs found in the Development Agreement for Hawkeye Development. The eligible cost list has exceeded the expenditures for the installation of public infrastructure. Through the RCHID program, Hawkeye Development LLC is eligible to be reimbursed for the costs listed. Hawkeye Development LLC is requesting to amend the expenditure amounts for the following items: stormwater, street grading, paving, graveling, curbing, curbing and guttering and surfacing, traffic control, alley surfacing, performance bond, maintenance bond, engineering and servicing, and administration fees. During the development process, there have been a few issues that have increased the estimated cost of the infrastructure installation. The developer was unaware of additional items that could be included in the eligible expenses. The existing total eligible costs are five-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Hawkeye Development LLC is requesting to raise the total eligible costs to five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. This is an increase of thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents. This increase gives the developer the ability to be reimbursed for the additional incurred costs. However, reimbursement is not guaranteed as it is dependent upon the property tax revenues generated from this district. Your alternatives are the governing body may approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Hawkeye Development as proposed, the governing body may approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Hawkeye Development with changes, or three, the governing body may not approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Hawkeye Development. Staff would recommend alternative one to approve it as proposed.
So I have a question, so these were costs that before they didn't know were eligible, or these are costs that actually occurred, and so now that, these are costs that they had to do additional, so I just want to make clear.
So it's both. As time went on, there were some things that they had to go back and fix, and so their costs went up, and then obviously, with COVID, there's all, there's an increase in costs overall, and then there are some things like the performance bond and the maintenance bond, traffic control that they didn't know could be included the first time, and so they want to go ahead and add that in.
I move that we approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for Hawkeye Development as proposed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
So when I was, I mean, I'm still a little bit confused on just the language that, and you can help me out, because you do this probably daily, but when I, when I read it, it just means it, it's, we're approving for the First Amendment to the Development Agreement, but in the, you know, in the background, it's asking that they were amending their cost amount, and then readjusting it to the new amount, so is this structured that way? Is that what it's actually word for, I mean, help me understand?
Yes, so this Exhibit E is in the original Development Agreement, and so that's the section that they're actually amending. So originally, you approved their Development Agreement.
So the amendment is just talking about?
Correct.
Okay, that helps the students out, too, so. Not just me. Thank you.
All right. Okay, well, we'll take a vote, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, excuse me, twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve awarding the K-156 and Jenny Barker intersection traffic signals bid to Phillips Southern Electric Company for six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventy-five cents. Now, we'll appear. I feel a little more comfortable here.
There you go.
On December, that is December 7th, 2021 meeting, the governing body directed staff to bid the installation of traffic signals for the intersection of K-156 and Jenny Barker Road. The design of the traffic signal system was completed by Wilson and Company, and reviewed and accepted by the Kansas Department of Transportation as meeting all of KDOT's requirements. Bids were advertised and opened on September 12th, 2022, where one submission was received from Phillips Southern Electric Company from Wichita, Kansas, for six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventy-five cents. Phillips Southern Electric Company has extensive experience in the installation and repair of traffic signal systems throughout the state of Kansas, and is on the KDOT prequalifications list for this type of work. The bid of six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventy-five cents is 6.99% higher than the engineer's estimate, which was five-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. This is partially due to the current inflation rate and the uncertainty of escalating costs associated with supply chain issues, and although the bid is higher than the recommended 2% allowance over the engineer's estimate indicated in the Financial Management Guidelines, the governing body can still choose to award the bid. So your alternatives would be to, the governing body award the bid to Southern Electric Company for six-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety dollars and seventy-five cents, or alternative two would be do not award the bid and direct staff to rebid the traffic signal installation. Staff recommends alternative one. And the fiscal note, if approved, the funding for this installation of the traffic signals will come from sales tax project fund number forty-five. With the cost of the signalization, it is estimated the total project cost for the Jenny Barker Road improvements will be approximately seven-million-three-hundred-thousand dollars. This is three-hundred-thousand... This is $300,000 above the initial estimated costs from 2017. However, it still comes out of the Sales Tax Projects Fund. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
I still have a question. How are the signals going to, how are, are they going to go over the top of that? Or are they going to just go on the side? How is that signal?
Well, there'll be poles and mast arms that will reach out over the intersection that will just like.
Yeah, somebody was asking and I said, I had no idea how that was going to look. So I just wanted to get a clarification.
And some of those, the mast arms are rather long because that's a very big intersection.
Huge, yeah.
So there may be a delay, somewhat of a longer delay in getting those manufactured. But once, if it's approved today, then the contractor will order the material and you probably won't see much activity out there for a couple of months because the conduits are already in place underground in the intersection. So really, the only thing that's left is to drill the caissons for the poles and then erect all of the materials, so.
Was this the only bid that we received or?
We only received one bid yesterday.
Are there not many companies that do this or?
I don't know why nobody else bid on the project. I, so there's a lot of people that do it, I think. I don't know, I'd be speculating, but.
Well, I noticed they have, have, you know, their proof of experience is vast, especially in the state of Kansas. So I just was wondering, due to the increase, and, and I just noticed we did only receive one bid. So that I was just wondering if we did get any others. I didn't see any others, but you answered my question. We only received one, so.
Was there an estimated time of completion? Just kind of a, I know it's, you won't be able to tell until they get materials ordered and what they tell them that. But what's usual?
I would say approximately, Commissioner, I'd say four to five months before it's completed and actually in operation has to go, everything has to be put in, assuming we get the materials quickly. And then it has to go up and be tested. Then it's got to be ran for several days just on flash before it would actually go into effect. And then it's got to be inspected by KDOT personnel as well as, as well as our engineers. So I would say four to five months.
I am grateful that the Jenny Barker Road Improvement stayed as close to budget, especially with all of the, you know, when you think about inflation nowadays and what everything costs. So staying just 300,000, I know 7,300,000 is a lot of money. But, you know, staying that close to what the original, back in 2017 with the original bid was, is amazing. So I, yeah.
I make a motion, we award the bid to Southern Electric Company for $638,390.75.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes?
Thanks, Mike.
The next item, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a professional services agreement between the city of Garden City and Viola Advanced Solution USA Utility Service Company. Utility Service Company is what we refer to them as, for the restoration and continued maintenance of the water tower at the Garden City Regional Airport. And Mr. Jones will talk about this.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Commissioners. Since 2017, Utility Service Company has maintained the steel water towers and reservoirs in the city of Garden City. The 60,000 gallon tower at Garden City Regional Airport requires a repair to the steel. Inspection of the tower indicated the interior and exterior coating requires replacement. And because of the labor involved in rigging the tower so workers may make the repair to the steel, it would be prudent to paint the tower while the repair is completed, utilizing the existing rigging for the tower. That tower is a petosphere, so there, there are no ladders on the exterior of it. Staff proposes enrolling the tank asset at the airport in the Utility Service Company Tank Maintenance Program. The program has benefited other tank assets in the city of Garden City and will spread the cost of the tank restoration over several years. The program also includes preventative maintenance operations occurring at the tower every year. The year following the coating of the tower, the contractor will perform an interior inspection and washout of the tower. Maintenance of the tank structure, tank coatings and clean out and disinfection after cleaning is included in the program cost. The maintenance activities will continue during the duration of the agreement with the exterior maintenance and interior maintenance occurring in alternating years. There's a rubric below to kind of show the layout of that during the initial period. The city attorney, Jennifer Cunningham, has reviewed the service agreement and presented, presented in this agenda item. Alternatives are to approve the proposal from Utility Service Company and enter into a preventative maintenance program for the water tower at Garden City Regional Airport for a cost of $18,635 in 2022. The other alternative is to deny the proposal and direct staff to find an alternate solution to perform the repair at the water tower. Staff recommends Alternative Number 1. Approve the proposal from Utility Service Company and enter, enter preventive maintenance agreement program for the water tower at Garden City Regional Airport for a cost of $18,635 in 2022. Just due to the nature of this agreement, the fiscal note is a little lengthy. The project costs will be expended from GL 08031316040.05. That's our materials mains fund. The budget amount of the expenditures from this line item has been exceeded in 2022 and therefore no budgeted amount remains available. However, due to the critical nature, the repairs needed for the airport water tower, the city plans to overspend that budgeted amount in that line item to accomplish the repairs. The additional expense will draw on the cash balance of the Water and Wastewater Fund, which has an available balance of $11,430, $430,763 as of August 31st, 2022. The budgeted cash forward for the fund at the end of 2022 is $7,324,606. The program's cost will be $18,635 per year for years one through five of the agreement. In year six, the program cost will be $8,148. In subsequent years, the program cost is subject to an annual cost increase not to exceed 5%. If the city elects to terminate the contract before the completion of the first five years, the city will be billed for the balance of the five-year term as outlined in the agreement. City may terminate the agreement with notice to Utility Service Company 90 days before the start of the next contract year.
So I was reading the, the airport minutes and they were talking about the, the, what it's going to be painted on both sides. Is this the design in that they've settled on? And I think the GCK logo, the airport logo would be facing the airport? I think, I think what it says is a GCK logo.
Rochelle's here. Rochelle can give us a better idea.
Hi, good afternoon. Yes, the GCK will be facing basically the southern side, or sorry, the north side. So you'll see as you enter the airport.
Okay.
And then the Army Air Base will be as you're leaving. So it just kind of replaces what's currently there. The Army Air Base is updated a little bit and our logo, our new logo is going to be applied as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So Fred, this locks in the contract for that six years. And then the seventh year is when you have to renegotiate the contract? Is that?
No, in the seventh year, you can just continue to pay that maintenance fee and they continue to do their work annually as long as we pay that fee. So that also includes if the tower needs to be completely repainted and recoded, we just continue paying that annual maintenance fee. For instance, I know we have some coating at Main and Kansas Tower that we've had a flake or two fall off. They will come back in, they will repair that and paint it. That's part of the agreement we're, we're paying for. So it prevents us from, from having towers get shabby looking, for lack of a better term, as, as their needs arise to make sure that the coatings are maintained outside or inside. They're doing that yearly.
And you call this a, what kind of a biosphere or?
Petosphere.
Petosphere.
Yeah.
I've never heard that term.
Yeah. That's for trivia night.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make the motion, we approve the agreement as presented.
Second. Right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred.
Thanks, Fred. Commissioners, there's no other new business on your agenda. So if you would like, you could approve the consent agenda. And if approved, it would be Items D 1 through 4.
I move to approve consent agenda Items D 1 through 4.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes.
Okay, no further business, Mr. Mayor. If you guys would like to do your commission reports.
All right, Commissioner Euler.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I promise you, these are allergies with a little bit of a cough thrown in for fun.
Yeah.
I mean, it's terrible that you have to.
That's why you're bringing it away, yeah.
That's why everyone's, no. I enjoyed attending the groundbreaking last week for the Western Kansas Corridor and then the, the following ribbon cutting for the outdoor kennels. And then also honoring of Vince Mancini and, and his wife Skip for all of the work that they've done for the Humane Society. And, you know, just for the community in general, I mean, both have been very actively involved. And it's been just amazing to be able to thank them for their work that they've done here in this part of the state. So we're really proud that they're a part of our community. Also, I had a chance to attend Fall Fest and I wanted to thank Downtown Vision for the great job that they did. But then also the city for all of the booths that you guys had and all the equipment you had out there. It's always kind of stressful, I'm sure, to, you know, when you have the, the tower truck and when you have the utility carts and, and keeping people in and out of. I mean, it's probably quite a logistical issue, but you guys did well and the kids look like they're having a good time. And I signed up yesterday for the text alerts at my GCKS. And it really was easy. It's just as easy as what they tell you. And so I'm pretty excited to get text alerts, just, you know, not a million of them, but you know, at least, at least, you know, to get some of them. So I'd encourage you to do that. It is a good way to stay informed. And thank you for the government class for coming in today and observing. It's always fun. This is live, you know, this is, you know, on TV, it's all polished. And here, we're pretty polished too, I like to think. But it's just fun to have you guys come in and observe. So you're welcome back anytime. That's all I have.
Commissioner Euler.
So on my way in, I drove by the skate park. And if you've not seen, it's really, they've already got the pump and track forms. So it's kind of exciting. I was out at Home Depot and I was, I saw a young guy with, he had a, looked like a broken arm. I said, oh, how'd you do it? And he said, he goes, oh, I broke the skateboard. So I thought, well, this won't happen once we get the new skateboard park. Because you'll actually have a place to go and skate, skate safely. So it was really exciting just to see the work that's doing on that. And that's going to be just another incredible park in Garden City. For those of you who have not gotten a chance to visit some of the parks, I know that Dean Wiley is, I'll tell you, it is busy all the time. And it's so much fun watching families and friends have fun out there and have a really good time. So I just willingly say thank you to the Parks Department for all the work that they're doing. Also on the trails, if you're, I'm an avid trail user, so we use all the time. Thank you, I know that the stickers and the sandbars, there's nothing you can do. But I mean, I mean, you've done a really great job. And I'm really excited about the opportunity to get some of those big cracks fixed. And so that will be a really neat, neat thing to do. I do want to say thank you again, just to, thank you for bringing your class. That's really cool. And I, and I, you know, extra time and spending, and spending it here with us. We're really excited that you're learning about that someday. You, one of you will, all, one or all of you will be up here. So that's really exciting. And I just want to say thank you. Just Garden City has so much going this fall. I'm looking forward to the cooler weather. And we were talking up here earlier that usually we have it summer and then fall is two days and then winter hits. But we're excited about the cooler weather. But I just encourage you to get outside. There's lots of really neat events. Our, I didn't realize about the GCK, the text alerts. I don't know. I'm not really good at texting.
It is very easy to sign up for.
I'm getting better at texting, only because I have to. But I really just, if you want to find out about Garden City, you can check our web, website has everything, absolutely everything that you need. If you can't find it, you can always call. But I'll tell you, our Facebook page is probably, it's so active and has some really great, just great information. So just want to encourage you all to use those resources and that's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Sessna.
Yeah, again, I'd like to thank the class for coming. This is what government looks like and especially local government. If you guys missed it, we actually did a lot of big things in our community to make us more of a regional hub. We approved funding for additional retail. We're moving forward on the third fire station in the community. I don't know if you guys have to do a report, so I'm giving you some bullet points here. We're moving forward on the stoplight at Jenny Barker and 156, which will be great. So hopefully get rid of the stop signs. And just the improvements and signage at the water tower. If you haven't seen recently, they've got the, the elevator shaft built for the terminal and that's moving forward. So starting to make some really good progress on the new airport terminal. Yeah, Fall Fest was greatly attended. If you haven't seen the banners, the banners are up on Main Street. Check those out. That really livens up our, our downtown. I'd like to thank Mike for all of his work today. Did a good job. And to the students and anyone else, we talked about the airport advisory board on the water tower. But if anybody would like to be on the, any of our advisory boards, we have quite a few of them. That helps us as commissioners to make decisions. And that helps get you active and more involved in the community as well and helps us in our, in our community overall. So check out those advisory bar, boards. They are on our website. And we do put them out on social media every, every once in a while when we do have openings. But take a look at that. And that's all I've got.
All right, Commissioner Ortiz.
Not too much. I'd just like to remind everybody of fall cleanup coming up. That's a big one. I know, you know, with all the resolutions that come through and, you know, ordinance, city ordinance with trash being removed by the city. But there is fall cleanup that actually allows us all to put, you know, put your trash over on the curb in the front and the city would come and, and pick that up for free. So that's an awesome program that, that the city offers. But also would like to add that I appreciate the class coming today too. And if you want to find me, I'll give you commissioners' emails over here. So if you've got questions, you can ask them because they know more than I do. No. No, it's really, if you guys ever want to reach out to us and, and ask questions, feel free. That's what we're here for. That's a, we love seeing leaders in the community, especially young adults. So you guys are going to be moving, moving on and moving forward. And what a great way to kind of start off and seeing what we do as a city to kind of see what to expect in other cities as you go to college and on. So yeah, keep, keep joining and going to those meetings. With meetings said, there are a lot, a lot of meetings coming up. I'm not going to mention them all, but I haven't got an invite for Christmas meals yet. So that's one I'll go forward to because, you know, it's like Micah always says, he looks forward. She, she counts down from 365 days to Christmas, so. But I'm not like that. I just like the, I just like the meals and Thanksgiving and Christmas. But I'm hoping that this is the last hot day of the, of the summer. So 99 degrees today, so stay cool. I know there's just a lot of sports going on and outside. So contact the fire department. I know they're excited to get out and just wash you down if they're available. So you can cool off in ways with the water. But no, appreciate all of the, the staff for their reports that they put into the packet. It's great information. There's a lot of development going on around town. And I've always kind of said, just Garden City's growing, Garden City's growing. And so people ask, what's going here or what's going there? And there's a lot of dirt being moved. So it's really exciting to see the new developers coming to town and actually the city working with those developers to revitalize some of these older buildings as well, like the Sears Building. So we appreciate that work, being involved in that. And then some of the, with the airport, getting a, get a new airport out there. That's going to be exciting. So it's all work right now, but we'll be able to enjoy it here shortly. So that's, I'll stop talking. That's all I got. Thank you.
Well, that pretty much summarized everything I was going to say. Y'all did a good job, but you have to listen to me anyway. Had a good time at Community Mexican Fiesta, great turnout, great event. Good job Diane Helica and everybody involved with that. It's really a good asset for our community. As well as Fall Fest, Jan and Leandro with Downtown Vision did a very good job and all their volunteers. So really two back-to-back really good events happening in Garden City that, that went off pretty well. Like Commissioner Ortiz said, great to see companies like Woodmont get, get into the game here and start to do some development. Also, kind of really close to that is Legacy Crossing, which is getting going. And, and that's through, which is now called Dream First Bank, which is First National Bank has re-branded, so thanks to Dream First Bank for, for that project just at Legacy Crossing. On the day that we had both the Western Kansas Corridor groundbreaking and the ribbon cutting for the Humane Society Outdoor Kennel, we had some people in the office that was learning about our community and just kind of going around, just giving them tours. And we're just talking about what's going on. And then it's, we're trying to figure out our time. Like, well, I got to go because we're going to have this and then we're going to have this. And, and they were just really impressed that we had all that stuff going on and, and really impressed with Garden City. And it's one of those things that you almost get to the point where you're almost just like, well, these are just things I got to tick off the box. But I mean, really, things like the corridor and the Humane Society and, and stuff that's going on with retail is really big things. And there's a lot of cities around us that are envious of what And there's a lot of cities around us that are envious of what we do. And it's because of the team that we put together, both on the, the city side, but and also our, the private developers and our businessmen that make that possible. So we are really lucky to have just the constant development that we have in our community. So that's good to say. See, and then the last thing I was going to say is, is thanks, Mike, for stepping in for Matt as our assistant city manager, or our, our city manager and both assistant city managers are away at the conference. So thanks for doing the show. And I will say, if anybody, if any of the students want to have, have any questions afterwards, just come up and, and talk and we, we can go through whoever you want to talk to. Mike?[1773.54]